All right, welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council meeting. It is 6:41, we're running a little bit late. We had an earlier meeting, executive meeting. Councilman Skels Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. And we bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight just to say thank you, Lord. That is something that we don't deserve, but we thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy. And, Lord, we ask that you touch and bless every family in our community. And, Lord, we thank you for a successful school year for our children and the ones that are graduating. Lord, we ask that you put a special shield of protection around them as they start another phase in their lives, Lord. And, Lord, as the weather is changing and it's getting, going to get hotter and hotter, we just ask for our city to help, when the families go out, to be safe, have patience, and have love for one another. And we ask that you protect our police and fire as they do the jobs that they do, Lord, and protect our entire city. This is our prayer. As we get ready to do our meeting, we ask that you move in the midst of us. This is my prayer that I ask in your darling son's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we move to our consent agenda, I want to recognize we have both of our chiefs here, Chief McCluskey and Chief Bowen, and then we also have, Chris, I always get your title. I think Chris is the Director of Emergency Services inside Rutherford County. And so, Chris, Chris had asked to come and really just make some comments to the City Council and really to the residents of Murfreesboro. So, Chris, the floor is yours.
Thank you for the time, your time. On April the first, approximately 1:00 a.m. in the morning, we received notification that the city of, the area around the city of Eagleville had been impacted by an EF1 tornado. Shortly after, approximately 30 minutes later, we were notified of an EF2 that touched down in the area of Reedville. We immediately sent search and rescue teams out to both places, finding that the Reedville area had been impacted a little more than Eagleville. Approximately nine buildings were destroyed in Rutherford County. We've been working in conjunction with Cannon County. The reason I'm here tonight is I want to thank the city of Murfreesboro, the city fire department for their response. You may not know that your city fire department came and assisted our county fire department in a search and rescue effort until daylight. There, they were able to assist in the rescue efforts of a couple of buildings that were collapsed with victims trapped inside. We also were able to detect hazards and eliminate them as we went. And we were pretty firm that we had found everybody by daylight. During that time, the operation continues, and it continued for approximately two weeks. With assistance of your city manager, your fire chief, we were able to not only deliver search and rescue efforts, but we also had many, many volunteers that we had staged a volunteer center at New Hope Church of Christ there located in Cannon County. Our problem was is that we would have too many cars on the roadways to hinder our cleanup efforts. So, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, we were able to secure a St. Clair's senior citizens van along with a Murfreesboro City firefighter that day after day drove volunteers to the site to help clean up. Saturday, the evening of the impact, I requested two battalion chiefs to come to our EOC to help develop the first operational plan for our tornado that would occur Sunday morning due to low staffing. Also, during this event, we also requested assistance, and we received that from your solid waste department that sent several pieces of equipment to help with debris removal, along with your street department that contributed equipment as well. I came tonight to tell you thank you. We appreciate your partnership, we appreciate your personnel, and we appreciate your friendship. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, Chris. Chris, hold on a second. Chris, I think is going four years in your position? Is that three years? Seems longer. But, folks, Chris helps coordinate when there's any type of disaster response, but also coordinates all of our emergency services inside Rutherford County. And I can tell you on a personal level, Chris could not be better to work with. When we were having the discussions a couple of years ago about different things inside dispatch, Chris was always level, Chris is always level-headed, tries to find the best way that we can all work together. And so, Chris, publicly, you've not ever been in front of the City Council before. I just want to tell you how good of a job you do for Rutherford County and for Murfreesboro. So, we are very thankful for you. All right, we'll move to our consent agenda. You have three items on your consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have two items in all business. Under land use, we have ordinance 23OZ16 zoning for property along Manson Pike. This is second and final reading.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Ordinance 23OZ15 rezoning property along Winlon Drive. This is second and final reading.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business. You have fiscal year '24. We need to conduct a public hearing and related ordinances for our fiscal year '24 budget. Craig.
I'll, uh, turn it over to you.
Aaron.
Sorry. It's okay.
Darren Gore. Where is, oh, there he is.
Council received the presentation earlier this evening on the city's budget, so we'll need to conduct a public hearing for the city's budget and the city's tax rate ordinances.
Any questions for Ms. Tucker? Ms. Tucker, before we talk about our budget, do you want to give just a quick overview on our budget overall? Is there a tax increase?
There is no tax increase. Our tax rate will remain at $0.9526 on the dollar. Our budget is balanced. We have about $238 million in operating revenues and expenses. And I just want to thank everybody for their hard work. I appreciate everybody's support during this time.
All right, we need to hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. If you'll keep all your questions and comments directed towards the City Council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23O18.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, please.
We needed something about the health insurance, right?
That's right.
Okay.
So, my recommendation would be if y'all agree to reduce the health insurance premium increase, to include that in your motion, and then we'll update the exhibit for second reading at the June 8th meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance with condition of reducing the health insurance premium to 4% increase from 8%.
Can I ask one question? Would you mind including in your amendment adding an additional $40,000 to be able to pay? We have not put that in the budget, correct? For the fire, the police officers who are not covered under the state plan?
If we do the either/or on the $100,000 relocation assistance, we most likely will be covered on that.
Okay. Because we have the $100,000 in.
We have $100,000 in there already.
So, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. This is for the amendment for first reading for ordinance 23O18. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll now consider first reading on ordinance 23O18 as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item C, first reading. This is ordinance 23O19.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 7, ordinance 23O21. This is the impact fee schedule. We'll need to hold a public hearing on the impact fee schedule. Was there any discussion on this before? Craig, any discussion?
On the impact fee schedule, while the council has considered impact fees now for a couple of sessions, we've had workshops on these over the last couple of years, and council gave instruction during the last workshop on the fees that they felt were appropriate on the impact ordinance, and that's reflected then now in the, in the fee schedule. So, once the fee schedule is adopted, then the ordinance on the process that was adopted some time ago will become effective on the effective date of this, this ordinance. So, if there's any questions about impact fees, we're happy to, happy to answer those.
Just a comment, the letter states that it's written as a dollar a square foot. Currently, I'm looking in the ordinance, does it spell it out? Are we still going to discuss what, what does that look like on a dollar per square foot, or $2 per square foot, or whatever it is?
Yeah, that, that, that was, council requested to have the ordinance brought back so it could engage in that discussion. So, yeah, that's a discussion that should be, if you want to amend that number that's in there, then, then you should have a discussion and amendment.
Yeah, it just says fiscal impact assumes a dollar a square foot for all residential. That's what it says here in the memo.
Yeah, I'm for discussing, let's do the public hearing first.
Okay.
All right, all right, we'll hold a public hearing on the impact fee schedule. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll now consider on first reading ordinance 23O21.
Me first? All right. So, there's no good time to pass something like this, whether it's, when I got on council two and a half, two years ago, or whatever it was, then we're in the middle of COVID, we don't know what to do. Now, it's, we got economic uncertainties, we don't know what to do. But the one thing we can't do is keep pushing this down the road, or our charge too little, and know we're going to be right back here in two years, three years, five years, whatever that amount is. We ran it through the other day at the workshop meeting at $3 a foot, that didn't pass. We know, we talked about it in the budget meeting earlier, we probably have a $50 million school coming up. We got parks coming up. As expansion happens, you have to build more fire stations, more police are needed, more roads are needed. As a token of compromise, I'm going to say, how about we do a three-year staged implementation? Two years, $2 the first year, $2.50 the second year, $3 the third year, and we will, at budget time, look at those numbers every year to make sure that those are still good. If they're not still good, we can back them down, but keep the schedule just in case. Let's say year two, the economy's not doing good, so we don't need to go all the way to two and a half, but year three, we can go all the way to three if the economy's back good. That's, that's what I'm going to propose, is just as a, as a compromise.
Did you just say that? One, two, three?
No, I said two, two fifty, three.
Oh.
So, your proposal is year one, $2.
Year one, $2.
Year two, $2.50. Year three, $3.
Correct.
With the contingency that if economically things are not going well?
We discuss it at budget time and back it down.
Back it down, keep it.
That's right. So, if next year, if we're in the same trajectory we're in now, instead of hitting $2.50 at budget time, we say, hey, we don't even need to steal, we need to just keep it at $2. That's fine. But go ahead and have the staged implementation.
My take on this is $1, no more than one and a half, and each year, go back and look at it, not saying already that the next year's going to be two years, next year, three years. I would say let's look at it every year because so much changes.
And just to clarify, that's just on the single family. I'm for full blows on multifamily and commercial. If we could charge multifamily extra, I'd be down for children, charging multifamily extra.
I'm, I'm going from the standpoint of people surviving. That's what I'm going on the standpoint of, people surviving. So, I do not agree with that.
Where are you at, Madeline?
She's at $1.
Are you proposing $1.50, $2, $3 to review each year? Is that what you're proposing?
I'm proposing, well, I'm going to be like my dad now. When he was on this council, he said, I can't have the whole loaf I sell if I have. So, I would look at one, I really want one and look at it yearly. That's what I really want. And I guess that's what I'm going to propose.
I agree with that.
So, you're proposing a dollar the first year, $2 the second year?
Nope. $1 the first year, and every year thereafter, let's look at it.
$1 every year?
That's $2 the next year. Madeline, I respect your opinion. You've been on this council a long time. I think that's a little low. And the reason I say that is, if you look at just the city of Laverne, they passed, I want to say it was a $5,000 flat fee, and they're only dealing with, I believe, two buckets, one for public safety and one for roads. They don't have to deal with the schools or the parks. And so, at a dollar a square foot on a 2,500 square foot house, we would be below the city of Laverne with two additional buckets. So, that's why, in my opinion, I support Councilman Wright's approach of $2, $2.50, and $3, with the contingency of economically, we're not doing well, we can back it down. I also think that's fair to a builder or developer if it's phased, in that they have time to adjust as they're acquiring land to develop or materials and all that. It, at least gives them a notice versus just a flat-out $3 right off the bat. I think a phased approach is fair, but I would support the $2, $2.50, then $3, that Councilman Wright is proposing.
And I respectfully respect you, and I respectfully disagree.
Okay. I still love you.
Let me add, let me add something. The, the way this ordinance is written, these impact fees are not due until CFO. So, this builder is not coming out of pocket before that house is built to pay these impact fees. This house is, and most of the time, going to be sold, or let's say it's not sold, they're not going to pull for their CFO until it is sold. So, we're only talking, this builder coming up with money in a short term between CFO and closing.
So, a week.
So, a week. We're not talking about upfront money that they're paying six, eight months prior to a house being built. We're talking about days to a week before a closing.
Well, I'm talking about the average person, you know, that's what I'm talking about, the average citizen. I think it's too much. I mean, if it's the county, are they going to raise their taxes?
Okay, bud.
I mean, every time we look around, it's more and more money, and people like me, I mean, I'm drawing the same check, and I draw the same check until I breathe my last breath. We just can't keep killing people, just stabbing them and stabbing them financially. We just can't keep doing it.
But this only applies to somebody buying a brand-new house.
I know. And look how many people are coming in here buying new houses.
But that's why we're needing to do something like this, because we're moving in here.
So, 1%.
Well, I will say, I like the direction that we're going with the, if we're going to increase it, I like the gradual increase. I like that we've all seemed to come to a conclusion that, that we support that, but I am pretty certain I want a dollar, maybe a dollar fifty the first year. I don't know that I want to start as high as $2. And I'll renew my argument next year.
Can I ask one question? I'm not debating the amount. The one thing I didn't see in this, when does this take effect?
We could, the way the ordinance, Craig and I were just talking about this, the way the ordinance is written, it was 15 days it would go into effect, but we could make it go in effective July 1st, or whatever date.
The only reason I ask that, because this just hit on me, is a lot of times when somebody pulls a permit, they have already, they're already working off of a budget that they already have worked on. And if we make this 15 days after, and now that it's CFO, then all of a sudden, these people.
If you have.
It'd be after a certain permit date?
If you have a land development plan, I think that's, a land development plan approved, or you have a permit that you've already pulled, then this doesn't apply to them.
Okay. That's what my question was. I didn't read that, I must have missed it, but, you know, if, if you pulled a permit, say, today, and you were working off of a budget, but you have to pay that at CFO, clearly that's not in your budget.
No, that's.
No, no, it wouldn't, if you pulled the permit before the effective date of the fee, you're, you're not affected.
Okay.
Yeah. And putting the effective date on the, you know, July 1st, if we're going to have a multiple year increase, gives us a date certain when we know that it's going to go into effect, as opposed to having to go back and find the ordinance and figuring out when that was effective. So, that's why we talked about a July 1 date.
And to put this on the record, I, I don't, because I think I stated in a previous workshop, I don't want an impact fee at all. I think Madeline and I have, have shared that sentiment. However, acknowledging that there is growth in Murfreesboro, I would prefer that everyone pay for the growth, but given the strong opinions of my colleagues, I think an impact fee is inevitable, but I want it to be as low as possible, for the reasons both Madeline and Kurt have stated.
Well, and also, we do have to understand that the developer's going to pass this off. If you think he's not going to pass it off, something's wrong. So, with that being said, I, I want to be a team player with this, Mr. Wright. I, I'd like to propose that would go in at $1.50, $2, and $2.50.
Why do we have to, why do we have to talk about next year and the year after? I mean, why can't we just bring it back to the table? We may want to keep it.
It gives the builders an ability to adjust their comps based off their sales, to, that way they can adjust to the upcoming fee before it hits.
And exactly. That's why I'm saying, let's go one. The lower, the better.
Bill? I'm concerned, you know, impact fees have been on the table every time, if you run for office very much in Rutherford County for anything, really, impact fees have been on the table forever, and the issue is trying to create another revenue stream, basically, for how we can, as, provide the services and amenities that the public wants and demands. The pressure has always been on that, who has borne that responsibility, is property tax owners are paying for that. And so, this does give us an opportunity to shift some of that responsibility onto the new people, the new folks that are, they're building here. You know, this, existing homes won't be affected by this. If you buy a home, about all I can afford is an existing home. So, we talk about that, and as you get older, sometimes you're not building a new home. So, anyway, some of the concerns, I think, are, are related to individuals that are buying a new home. And that's where the cost, that's where the dollars are recouped, and you're shifting some of the expenses of schools and roads, parks, fire and police, to that, to those new owners, to those people that are coming to our community. I tend to be in the $2 range to start it. I, I'm just worried that a dollar, it does not going to make a significant difference. And again, I would say, starting at $2, I like the idea of phasing it in. I think that's probably a, a easier way to, to accept that pill. And then, Sean, I do like the idea that we review it, and the issue is that we might maintain that same fee for the same, for years. So, I'm, I'm more in the $2 starting range than, than the $1. I'm not sure if $1 is enough.
I don't think it is either, and to, to, to make Councilman Maxwell's point, Laverne's $5,000 flat, no matter what the square footage is, we're basing this off an average home of 2,500 square foot, is where we're getting this, trying to come up with our final number. We're trying to build schools and parks as part of ours. Laverne is not putting any money into parks or schools, because they don't have a school system, and they're at 5,000 flat. So, if our average house is 2,500 foot, which is what the numbers show the past couple of years, a $2 fee really just makes it equal to what Laverne is, and they're not paying for schools.
Councilman Wright, with all due respect, we do not live in Laverne, thankfully. We live in Murfreesboro, and I would say that we have, don't laugh too hard, Mayor, we have.
Well, you are sitting in Eddie, Eddie's seat, so.
You know, in the legal community, in the legal.
Eddie Everwater.
In the legal community, there's persuasive law and there's controlling law, and while I will.
Jason Cole will be texting here in about five minutes.
I'm going to turn my phone off in case he calls.
Oh, he's already got me.
I, I will gladly look at Wilson County and Laverne and all these other places and take it under advisement, but I'm not willing to just say, well, we should do that because Laverne is doing it. I, I just, I'm, I think that's the worst excuse to pass an impact fee ever.
All right, you want to, do you want to look at Wilson County?
No. I don't want to compare it to anybody.
You know, I get so sick and tired of us always looking at these other communities.
Thank you, Madeline.
I mean, we do it when we looking at the salaries for people, well, this and this and this, so what? I mean, we're in Murfreesboro. We're here to take care of our people, regardless of what Smyrna, Laverne, Wilson, I mean, we are here to take care of our people. And let's keep that in mind, because we do all these studies, and I get so tired of all these studies. We need to do what's best for Murfreesboro people. Excuse me, I'm done.
Thank you, Madeline.
Madeline, this is my, my thinking. Everybody gets tired of me running my big mouth, but bear with me. But a $400,000 home at 30 years, 6% is a $2,392.20 payment. We add in a dollar a square foot on a 2,500 square foot house, that's 2,500 more dollars. That payment becomes $2,413.19, so roughly a $21 a month increase. If you go $2, that's 5,000, and it becomes $24, $28, $18, or $36. My point is, $36 a month in 12 months for that particular homeowner is, what, $400, $500? That house that appreciates 3% that first year is, is a $12,000 increase in value. So, I don't see a, a $2 minimum as a backbreaker. You're, you're talking about an extra $36 on a house payment. And $36, it may be very, very important to some people. I, I get it, they've got kids and families and diapers and formula, but we're talking, we're not talking like an extra $200 on a house payment, or 300. We're talking about $36.
Well, respectfully, Mr. Maxwell, when banks consider whether or not to lend money to a buyer to purchase a house, they don't look at how much the house is going to appreciate. They look at whether or not the buyer can afford the monthly payment.
Correct.
And $36 could knock someone out of the opportunity to buy that house. I, I mean, I see it all the time in my industry, and, so it is significant.
Fair point.
Go on, Sean.
$1.50.
I see it every day as well, and I've also seen it in good times and bad.
In Laverne? You saw it in Laverne?
I don't talk about other areas.
You've closed properties in Laverne, is that it?
No.
I, I've seen people in good times and bad times, if they really wanted a house, they'd pay 5,000 or something, $500 more to make sure they got the house that they wanted, and they did it in the blink of an eye. I mean, in the past two years, you saw people going upwards of $100,000 over list, waiving appraisals, waiving home inspections, just to be able to buy a house, and didn't think twice about it.
You saw that. I saw my friends not being able to afford to buy houses.
I think $2 at a minimum.
I see we're not going to agree, so, let's do a vote. Because we're going to go back and forth with this.
So, let me say this, I think eventually we're going to have to compromise. I know the one things that, Darren, do you know what the water and sewer fees are in Laverne? I just want to just-
Here we are comparing.
He's got a PowerPoint for it. He's got one.
Because I do know our tap fees here in Murfreesboro are extremely high. It's $4,600 per house. And Laverne is nowhere near that.
Does the water taste as good in Laverne as it does in Murfreesboro?
Depends.
Why don't you move to Laverne, Austin?
Depends if you're out by the landfill.
I think that's a good point, Kurt.
Well, maybe the discussion is, overall, in the impact fee discussion, is that we may need to look at our whole, our holistic fee structure, not just the impact fee part of the aspect, but the whole fee structure. And maybe that's what we do next.
Or before.
What if we did $1.75, $2.50, $3.00?
No. I mean, excuse me, I'm not going to agree with that. No. I mean, I'm not going to, but you know, you have others going to vote. But I'm just going to let you know before my name is called, no.
$1.50, $2.50, $3.00?
$1.50, $2.50.
Let me ask this question. Why are you all stuck on this $3? I mean, what's the magic about the three?
That would puts us not as high as Franklin. That puts us equal to Wilson County. We're still building schools, and we've got the parks aspect of it.
I think it's okay to talk about other counties, because I would assume the cost of asphalt, to put a road down here, is probably the same as it is in Wilson County. So, I think it's okay to say, what are other counties doing? They've established, here's what the rate is based upon the market conditions. I personally think a dollar, a dollar fifty, it's, well, let's not even do them then, if we're going to do that. It's just a waste of time, honestly. It's kind of insulting.
Meeting adjourned, great.
To do what?
If you're going to do it, do it to where, it's called an impact fee for a reason, because it's supposed to help pay for growth.
Pay for the impact.
Growth should pay for growth. It helps the other taxpayers. So, if it's low, we're still sharing the burden of growth with every taxpayer in this community. That's why I think at a minimum, it needs to be $2.
The costs aren't going to change. I mean, the costs of parks, roads, schools, fire and police, those costs are a given that's going to happen, regardless of what we say, whatever figure we are, we have here. So, the issue is, do we, we want to recover those, or pass that, shift that burden, to leave it with the property owners, because that's where it is now. It's, all of that money is having to, born, all that cost is borne by our property taxpayers. And what we're saying is, is shifting some of that cost to the new, the burden of that additional cost that's being created by those new people that are coming to our community, shifting some of that burden, and not all of it. We are a community, we're going to join hands and make it all happen, but a little bit more of that burden is being borne by those new construction, that new people, new homes that are in our, in our community. And I don't think that's unreasonable. It's not, it's not a blind eye to people's, the cost of living. I think an annual review of it are, is appropriate, to see what revenues are being generated. What are the costs? I mean, we talked this, earlier this evening, about the additional costs, how our budget's gone up. That cost continues to rise on us, and I think the issue is, do we want to shift some of that burden from existing property owners to new, or purchase a property, or new construction? And that's really the decision that we're making, and what is an appropriate way to, finding that figure is what, what we're trying to do right now. But I think making it so trivial that it really doesn't help with the things, we've got five buckets of things that we're trying to accomplish. And if we, if we only have a limited amount of resources that we're putting in that bucket, we really haven't, haven't, are we able to accomplish much with what we've put in that bucket? So, I think, you know, yes, that there will be some burden that will be, have to, have to be borne, but the issue is not, can you save taxpayers money? Because the issue is, they're going to pay it, if you say no impact fee, they're going to pay, have to pay it anyway, and we'll have to raise property taxes to make the difference, make the difference. And I think that's a tougher decision for us to make, if we had to make a decision to raise property taxes, because those expenses are still going to be there.
Craig, the multifamily residential is $7,624 per dwelling unit.
Correct.
Right.
Whether that's a thousand square foot, or a 2,000 square foot apartment. So, we're basically charging $7 a square foot, or $3.50 a square foot. So, that's why I just say, at a minimum, $2 should be a beginning point, with a phased approach. I think a dollar, a dollar fifty, a dollar seventy-five, we're wasting our time.
I would tend to agree with you. I was trying to help my counterparts over here.
I think with, with $2 proposal, I'm not willing to agree to a step-up basis for the next three years. I think if $2 is the number, then I'm done it, too. We can reevaluate after I don't get reelected.
I could, I could go with the issue, starting, if we don't have to phase it in, if that can bring us to consensus, I would go with the $2 start, and then we'll evaluate each year. I mean, the issue that we evaluate each year, but I could go with the two.
But I still don't like it. I saw Madeline looking at me. I still don't like it.
Craig, when would our next study be due? Because this study was done when I first got on council, so they're only good for so long. When would the next study be due?
Well, there's not an exact date. We need to have to do another study somewhat, it's guided by what we think costs are doing. That would be one factor. We know that costs have gone up significantly since we've done it. I think we're in probably anticipating another study within the next two or three years. We can, you can do one at any time. There's no, there's no guidelines on that. It's really to create the, the legal nexus between what you're charging and what expenses you're paying for.
All right, if it gets us to a consensus, I move for a $2 residential impact fee and full balloons on everything else.
Ooh, I mean, I, I don't know that I, I don't know that I like agreeing to something just because it gets us to a consensus.
I'll make a motion for a $2, first year, $2.25, second year, $2.50, third year.
All right, we have a motion on the table for $2, a $2 impact fee, the first year, $2.25, the second year, and $2.50, the third year. Do we have a second? All right, seeing a second, that motion dies for a lack of a second. The floor is open.
All right, I'll go back to my original motion. I'd like to make a motion for $1.50, first year, $2, second year, and third year, $2.50, but we will review after each year.
So, you're $1.50, $2.50?
No, $1.50, $2.
Oh, $1.50, $2, then $2.50.
We can review, if we review after that second year, and we see that we want to go to three, that's fine. I'm good with that. But I do believe we need to start at $1.50. You know, we've survived so far without an impact fee. And we can talk about, well, schools need to be built. Hell, we made a wave before. I think we've done a good job. We still building schools, we still building fire stations. So, if we're going to base, base everything off on the impact fee, that's not how we're going to figure out our budget and move forward in the past, because that's not how we're going to survive as a council, and survive as a unit, is installing impact fees on different organizations. And just to say, we need to developers pay their part. I think they're paying their part, but we also got to be conscious, there's going to be a recession, and when that recession hits, who's it going to hit back? Who's it going to impact? And we can say, that $300,000 house, that originally, and then that next thing you know, we hit an impact fee, that house is 310. You're going to have somebody out there that can't afford that house. It may not be any of you up here on this stage, but it may be somebody else. And that's how you have to look at it. What's best for Murfreesboro? Might not be what's best for us on this council, but what's best for Murfreesboro. So, $1.50, $2.50, we can review after each year.
That's on residential, and the rest are what's recommended? Okay.
I'll compromise with your motion, taking that bad word out.
Take that what out?
The bad word you used.
Bad word? What bad word? Laverne?
I think it started with an H.
Did you say that? Did you say that?
I'm going to second it without that bad word.
Is that just single family?
Single family.
And the rest are up there proposing.
It's single family, everything else is it, what's proposed.
Where were you at?
All right, so we have a-
Mayor?
$1.50, $2.50.
Want to clarify something?
So, we have a motion and a second for-
Mayor, could I just clarify one, one point that, an answer that Craig gave that-
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
We have a motion on the floor for $1.50, first year, $2 for the second year, $2.50 for the third year, with the option to look at that every year.
On single-family residential?
On single-family residential, multifamily, commercial, industrial, all that stays as presented. All right, we have a motion, a second. Adam, hold on one second.
You're abstaining, right?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. So, with the pass, it needs how many votes?
Need four.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
I just wanted to clarify something. Councilman Wright asked about how often we have to do the study. The ordinance says that you, city council has to review it not less than every five years, doesn't require a study. I, that's probably maybe implied, but it's not, and you can review it every year, you just have to, you can't go five years without reviewing it.
So, this three years takes us up to no less than five, because this one's about a little over two years old. So, it would take us to no less than five.
Yeah, yeah. In fact, if we get it, and I hate to just keep adding on to a motion, but you want July the 1st, if we're going to do, you know, subsequent years, and a July the 1st date makes-
I'm okay with July 1, and then do we need to specify that it's due at the CO?
That's already in the ordinance, you've already passed.
Okay. So, the motion is, is $1.50, $2.25, effective July the 1st.
Of each year.
With the annual review.
Yeah, well, yeah, an annual review, versus the ordinance, so it can be technically reviewed at any point, but, yeah.
I'm going to state I'm abstaining, again, for those who've not watched this, the 14 times we've talked about this. I did vote for the impact fee mechanism, but I don't ethically feel right voting on the amount. So, all right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Please call the rule.
Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Abstain, passes.
Yes.
Let me, let me just say, if you've been around this particular discussion for any length of time, I'm just glad we got to the point that we have an impact fee. It has been a struggle for this community to face up to that obligation, and I think we, while I, again, concerned about the number, but I think we at least passed over a threshold that is in the best interest of our citizens. And I thank my colleagues for giving it due consideration.
I want to, I second exactly what you just said. The staff, the council, I mean, this has been a work in progress for a very, very, very long time, and, hey, it wasn't what I, what I thought it needed to be, but we got it done, and it's going to be good for the overall citizens of Murfreesboro.
It's an honor to work with you guys.
I'm glad we got it done. I still think it's too low.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, get over it.
All right, yes.
With, staff was talking about how best to present the fee once you, first of all, you've, you've agreed on a number, you now have to pass the ordinance. Second of all, you-
Pat yourselves on the back.
The, so it's basic, the other thing is, is that staff was talking about how best to present numbers in Exhibit A, and we think it's to be consistent across all the different type of land uses, to do it in terms of square foot. Right now, the non-residential are listed as 1,000 square foot, but from an administrative, like, just implementation, it would make it easier to do it, instead of, you know, $5,000 per square foot. For some commercial properties, it would just be $5 per square foot. And we, before we made those changes and brought it back in that format in second reading, I just wanted to-
Are you saying the math's the same? You're just going to present it differently?
Yes.
That's fine, Adam.
Yes, thank you. Sorry.
You lost all of us.
Sorry.
Administratively, for the finance team, it will be way easier.
Jennifer and I had to 45 seconds, but that was still too long.
It's the administrative application, the math is still exactly the same.
So, you need a motion for the ordinance?
Yes.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Do we need to amend the ordinance?
Well, we just voted on the amendment, so this is first reading on ordinance 23021 as amended.
Ms. Averwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Abstain. All right, we'll move. Is there any other questions on impact fees?
Let's hold another public hearing on it. No, I'm kidding.
All right, we'll move to ordinance 2202, community decent standards. I'm just going to read the, you have the background information on, on what this is for, establishing standards of community decency in public places.
So moved.
Motion, a second. Is there a discussion? Councilman Shacklet?
This has been a difficult one for me, and so I will try to say what I really mean. If, I cannot support this document as it's presented, and if anybody knows me, I am for, and have fleshed my life out, to be decent in this community. But I am concerned that the document, as it's presented and written, has some unintended consequences that I would like to have cleared up, so that they don't cause something to occur that does not reflect the perspective of our community as a whole. The attempt in trying to do something that reflects and states our approach from the standards, I don't have a problem with that, but this document came to my understanding in an email Sunday. Since Sunday, it's been revised at least once, and I think there are statements of procedure, and how we will implement the actions of decency in our community, that, like I say, I can see having some unintended consequences, as to personal freedoms and the freedom of our citizens to make choices that are, in this community. And so, I would prefer we spend more time chewing on this bone, so that we can iron out some of those, as opposed to passing an ordinance that has really had very little review of council. Now, there may be members of our, of the council that have had longer to consider this than I have, but this was presented to council on Sunday, and, and a revision done, and now we're voting on it. And I will abide by whatever the will of council is, I always have, even when I've been the only one to vote against something. So, if the will of council is to advance this document for the good of our community, whatever happens, I will, I will support the will of council. But I cannot vote for this particular document as it is, as it is drafted. So, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Bill. I, I want to say to council that I support the general idea of this ordinance, but I also cannot support it as proposed. I'm not as poetic as Mr. Shacklet.
You tried.
I tried.
You can go back to Laverne now.
Jason's going to be so. For the record, Laverne, we love you, and Mayor Cole.
Y'all need to go back and watch the meeting with Eddie Smuterman about five years ago.
It was nice.
Yeah, it was not good.
I, I, you know, y'all have heard me say this, I don't think there's a good time to pass, there's not, we talked about this with impact fees. I, I like having something that's a defined process, so I'm, I'm going to, I think keeping something defined is better than not. Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion, a second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
No.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
No.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to resolution 23R21, setting time for council meetings.
Is this the Thursday thing?
So moved.
Moving it to Thursdays.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
This is moving the, setting the time for council meeting, this is moving the-
Wednesday to Thursday.
Wednesday to Thursday.
Yes, yes.
To the second Thursday at 11:30.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Would like to open a quick discussion as we're talking about meetings. The state statute has, is changing starting July 1. The state statute now requires that a public comment happen, needs, has to happen at every meeting for items related to the agenda specifically. And so what the recommendation after staff has talked would be having, it doesn't make much sense to have a public comment at the end of the meeting, after the agenda items are already done. So what we had talked about is having that, for example, for a 6 o'clock meeting, we would have public comment from 6 to 6:15, because it has to be part of the meeting. So we have to open our meeting up, and then there has to be public comment on it, and it has to be directly related to what's on the agenda. So it can't be like an open public comment to come talk about whatever's happening in the community. It has to be specifically about an item that we're going to discuss.
So you can't have a public comment?
We can't.
I mean, a general public, I mean, separate from the meeting.
We can't have, I mean, we can't have one, a public hearing after, I mean, like literally every action item, someone needs to have the opportunity to give the council feedback on every action item.
So if we, so if we did a comment at the beginning of the meeting on items on the agenda, and it could be suggested, I don't know if it can force someone, it could be suggested on items that do have a public hearing, that they wait until that item and then make a comment during a public hearing. But they can comment on agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, and council can take those into consideration. We can still have the regular general-
So, Bill, for like any resolution item, the new state law says that there has, we have to give the public opportunity to comment on anything that we're going to vote on that doesn't have a public hearing.
Right.
So the, the recommendation has been to do that from 6 to 6:15, but, but people have to sign up to come and, and participate in that, and then it has to be on topic to what we're discussing.
Right.
They get three minutes each.
I, I mean, I-
The ordinance, I don't think the state statute sets a time, but I think you can-
The statute allows us to set a time limit. It also allows for us to set a number of individuals that can speak during that time. It allows for us to set a max number or a max time limit for the public comment, and the public comment is kept to the action items and only to meetings that have action items. Okay. So if we have a workshop meeting that has no action items at all, there is no public, public comment required. And we can require that individuals have to sign up for the meeting to speak. Otherwise, you're not allowed to speak at the meeting, as long as we advertise how they can sign up for speaking during that public comment time. So five people, three minutes apiece, 15 minutes could be our max? Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I worry about, is 15 minutes enough? And I say it in the sense of, you know, there's a lot of times, a lot of people want to speak and, about stuff on the agenda, is that enough? Or do we say 30 minutes, and if there's three people that have signed up, then, okay, fine, we're done after nine minutes, in theory, and we begin the meeting. I'm just throwing that out there for discussion.
I don't, I don't think there's anything prohibitive, adjustment based on how many people sign up. You know, we can take a look at that and then make recommendations to adjust accordingly. So we could do a half an hour then.
Could we, could we do something in writing that said, you, you have to contact the city hall office to sign up to be on the, so that way we can budget, and if we see that it's going to have a longer time, then we can extend, extend that, you know?
Yeah, I think Jennifer and Adam are working on-
So if there's a public hearing, they can have two opportunities then to speak?
Yes. But I think what I would, chair in the meeting, I think what I would do is, if someone got up to speak for, you know, for example, a zoning issue, I would say, please speak at the public hearing, that this is for items that we don't have a public hearing.
Okay, so-
Like the consent agenda.
Yeah, so for example, if someone wanted to speak on the budget, since we just had a public hearing, we would recommend to them to speak during the public hearing of the budget, so that way the comment is about the budget, not about an action item.
And Adam and I were working on a policy to bring to council at the workshop meeting that could be applied to all meetings citywide, because this will have to be applied to every single meeting. It would apply to everything, so planning commission, any board, any, any meeting that has action items in it.
I wouldn't, this is probably not the most political thing to say, but I appreciate the state doing this, but we don't get the opportunity to caucus behind closed doors. So, you know, we have a sunshine law that we do everything in public. And I will say it's ironic that the group that is telling us to do that gets to deliberate behind closed doors, so.
So to, so to clarify, we, we have to open the meeting with a public hearing, but each action item, like, we still can keep public hearings on, like, zoning applications-
Correct.
-under the action item.
Correct. But we have to provide public comment at each meeting.
And the law does allow for, as long as we put in our public notice of meeting how to sign up for the public comment, it allows us to say you are required to sign up to speak, and if you don't sign up to speak during that public comment, we can say, sorry, you didn't sign up to speak, and we can say that there, there's no one signed up to speak during this public comment for this meeting, so we're not allowing anyone to speak.
So can, can y'all, well, sometime at our workshop in June, can we have this as a action, or not an action item?
And this is the world that begins one July.
One July. But we ha, we need to have something in place in June to be able to advertise. Plus, you also have to take into account, I mean, this affects airport commission-
Planning commission?
I mean, every single board-
That was our plan, was to bring it to the workshop, for the June workshop, so that we could have something in place to share with everyone citywide before the July 1 effective date.
And when we can circulate the draft of that before the work, I mean, in, in advance of the workshop, so if you have any questions in advance of the workshop, you could contact either Jennifer or me.
It would be great to keep it very simple.
Yes.
And then, you know, it would also be good, I think, the different department heads that have to deal with these board and commissions, to have them make sure that they're, they're coming to the, to the June workshop. It's going to put a lot more diligence on whoever chairs the meeting, just because if someone wants to get up and, we, we should, Bill, it was Bill's idea four years ago, whenever we started doing the public comment, that's been successful, but this is going to put a level of, it's going to put another level for whoever chairs the meeting to make sure that someone is talking about an issue that is on the agenda, not just someone who wants to come up and talk about whatever they want to talk about.
Okay, but to clarify, we still have our monthly public comment then, right?
Yes.
We're still going to have that.
This is separate.
And then if someone doesn't sign up to speak at the first public hearing, does that preclude them from speaking?
That's why you said if, if there's a public hearing on an action item, he's going to-
The public hearing still goes just as planned.
So they can still come to that and speak without signing up?
Of course.
Correct.
Just making sure.
Yeah, you don't have to sign up to come to a public hearing. You would just need, knowing that we have a time limit, you would just need to sign up for items that do not have public hearing that are on the agenda. I mean, it could be a consent agenda item. I mean, really, it's, the way it's written, it's any action item has to have a chance for public comment.
Thanks, government.
Okay. Sorry, I just, that, that came to my attention as we're talking about meeting times. The, the other part, too, and this is another discussion, we've not seen this as much, but we do, we do need to discuss whether we want that 6 to 6:15 or whatever that public comment to be televised. We had an issue years ago, especially at campaign time, where people would want to come up and speak at public hearings that had nothing to do with a public hearing, and they just wanted to come up and get on TV. So that, that's something that the council is going to need to discuss at the June meeting. I mean, I hate to say that, but I mean, we had, during campaign time, we'd have one gentleman who would come and he'd sit right at the backseat that would be on TV every single time. And that's your right to come do that, but you don't want this-
Wasn't that you?
No.
I mean, I can't get family members to come up here in t-shirts, so you know, vote for me.
We've not ever had a problem at the ci, in the city not allowing people to come and speak. That's not ever been an issue here. But I can see that may be issues other places. The airport commission, Chad, you are not very welcoming at all, you're, I'm just, just kidding. All right, let's move to Cherry Lane Phase 2 professional services.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, as detailed in a recent council workshop, the Corps of Engineers requested the city relocate a section of Cherry Lane Phase 2, proposed alignment due to encroachment on wetlands and a creek. Accordingly, staff has requested a proposal from Wiser Consultants, which will include the design of the relocated alignment and complete the final design and bid documents for the entire section of, of Cherry Lane Phase 2. If you'll remember, this is a section just to the west of Seagull Soccer Park that they've asked us to, to relocate the proposed location. Wiser's estimate for, to do this relocation and to complete all the, the engineering documents is $617,426 and be funded by the FY21 CIP budget. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, we'll move to Old Fort Golf Course renovations. Mr. Adams.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of city council. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider renovations to Old Fort Golf Course and approve the project using existing bond and loan, and loan proceeds. Couple of years back, we asked for the approval of a contract to hire a golf course architect for Full Greens renovation and bunker renovation. And so now we're just trying to move forward in that process and to accept, or, you know, offer that project out to bid, and then we'll come back to you once that is done, before any money is spent. So that's where we're at tonight, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I'm excited to see it. I'll move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Hey, Mayor, before we start-
I sit on that board and commission. I want to say Angela and Trey have done a tremendous job, and I think we, we will see the impact once we get this golf course done.
Good job, you guys.
Thank you. All right, let's talk about CityWorks software license renewal. Mr. Jarrett. Mr. Jarrett, so far, you also ran the tallest city employee.
I appreciate that.
Wait, what about Darren? Is he taller than Darren?
I think so.
Back to back.
Darren, come up here.
It's pretty close.
That's like harassment.
Pretty short, Darren.
Oh, wow!
Yep.
And Mr. Jarrett, no, talking about what you're talking about with IT, you're probably ranked up there with the smartest.
Did that in front of the HR director, too.
All right. It's been a long day. We started at 4 o'clock here.
So moved.
Well, we got a couple items, but we can get through them pretty quickly. So the first, IT is requesting the renewal of our enterprise licensing package with CityWorks, and this software is used in multiple departments throughout the city, and the license covers both asset management and land management portions of the software, and I recommend approval, and I'm glad to answer any questions.
Move for approval. Second?
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
All right, we'll move to low voltage work order at 2140 North Thompson Lane.
Yes, IT is requesting approval for a land link communications work order for low voltage cabling and equipment installation for the 2140 North Thompson Lane renovation project. This expense is within the project's budget and is funded by FY21 CIP. A revised, legal-approved work order was handed out prior to this meeting. Answer any questions.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, well, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
I don't have any board and commission appointments, any license.
We don't have any licensing tonight, but we do have two statements. We have a payable to Rutherford County Circuit Clerk for $55,000 to be paid from the General Fund Economic Development FY23 operating budget, with an additional $20,000 payable contingent on the removal of a building by August 31, 2023. The deputy city attorney emailed council regarding this payable last week. And then we have an invoice from Davis Environmental Attorneys for $66,119.44 to be paid from the General Fund Legal FY23 operating budget, and the city attorney emailed council regarding this invoice earlier this week.
Any, any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Any other business from staff?
We will meet on June the 8th, which is actually the second Thursday, although we passed an ordinance that just set the second Thursday's workshops. We'll meet in a regular session on that second Thursday. The first falls on a, on a Thursday, but that's a short week, because we have Memorial Day next Monday. So we'll meet in a regular session at 6 o'clock on the 8th, and then we'll meet in workshop on the 15th.
Craig?
So-
We just passed a res- Oh, no, that, that's, that's fine.
So are we meeting on the 15th in workshop?
We'll meet on the 15th in workshop.
Thursday.
Yeah.
So that's going into effect immediately?
Right.
Okay.
No, we can't, that's inconsistent with the resolution we just passed. The resolution was the workshop is the second Thursday, in sense-
I believe we advertised.
Oh, you're going to advertise it?
Yeah, we'll advertise.
We'll advertise the fif, the 15th is workshop, okay.
Is there public comment on the 8th, from 5:30?
On the 8th? It depends on what's on that agenda. If there's action items on there, then we'll have-
Well, the original public comment.
The original 5:30 to 6 public comment.
Oh, that's us, that would usually fall on the first. If we don't have a meeting on that, that first Thursday, then sometimes we move it to the next, so we could have it on the 8th at 5:30.
Okay.
And Bill, you will be there?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say-
Okay. I just wanted to say, well, all those people that came here for spring fling, I had an opportunity to be at the softball field the other day, and it was, there's a lot of excitement. Appreciate those people buying food and doing stuff in our community. And then we appreciate the fact they go home. But, but I want to really thank our Parks and Rec and city staff that have helped to put on this event. It is remarkable what happens during spring fling, and it brings a lot of economic vitality and exposes a lot of people. I was talking to someone at the ball field, said they'd never been to Murfreesboro before. I mean, imagine that. But they were excited about having come to Murfreesboro. And I tell you what, the, what face is put forward to these people that visit Murfreesboro. I happened to be sitting between two radio broadcasters. They were, they were both from different parts of the community, representing each of the teams that were on the field. And both of them, time and time again on their radio, said, this is the most beautiful complex. These people are so friendly. I mean, I'm just sitting there smiling, you know? And it was, it was really affirming to see the opportunity. How many people are exposed to our community because of spring fling? And that's their reference to our community. So anyway, our staff does a great job of putting a good face forward during spring fling. And they need, spring fling, and they, they need to be commended for that.
Two comments from today. We, several of us, we all were invited, and all of us had lots of things happening, but we were able to hear at the Murfreesboro Airport today that, is it general manager or director, Chad?
President.
CEO. President, CEO of the Nashville Airport spoke today at the Murfreesboro Airport. And Chad, I really would like, if it's possible, to get his slideshow that he talked about. But talking about the amount of people that are going through Nashville Airport on a daily basis, upwards of six, almost 60,000 passengers per day going through the airport. It was amazing seeing everything that was going through. And then also to welcome Senator, Senator Bill Hagerty was here in Murfreesboro as well today. So he addressed a group explaining and about what's going on in Washington right now.
Add on about the National Airport, the expansions they have planned and the international flights they have planned. It was outstanding.
And he did say that Murfreesboro Airport was one of his top three airports. The other one, his son, I was assistant manager, and he happened to be at our airport. But he said that was one of his favorite. I guess it is if he speaks to the Galton Airport tomorrow, that'll- But anyway, it was, it was really, it was really neat to see the amount of impact. I think it showed that there was roughly eight or nine percent of the, the daily traffic came from Rutherford County that was at that airport every day. So it was, it was, it was really interesting information. So welcome them to our community today. All right.
Just to add, before we get out of here, I know it's been a long day. I hope everybody has a wonderful Memorial Day weekend. There's nothing happy about Memorial Day weekend to me or others that have served. So I would just ask it, you think of what this weekend is about and to those that served. And we're not able to come home to great communities like this.
Amen. Thank you for your service, Austin. All right, seeing no other comments, we'll stand adjourned.